Oh, man.
It looked good. I took it out the door. What is it?
Can't give you no loving time.
One born every minute.
One born every minute.
They got me.
Somebody's dream.
Yeah.
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 Propane.
Hey, I figured out how to get this on.
Just long enough, get a run and get that thing done. She throws up solid. Put her away.
It stuck when I sweetened it for.
Have you ever emptied before?
No.
Don't you have any speaking?
I'm a machine.
You used to work, you used to work in Indiana.
No, two of you were going on.
Well, it's only for the last month.
No, I just.
Were you at school, were you at school?
Yeah, but it never wrote down, so.
It was by yourself.
They were.
I didn't help it.
I think he may work with it.
Oh, yeah.
You don't have to.
Because it's sensitive.
I think.
You don't have to.
I'm trying to listen to what you're saying.
Yeah, caught up in politics.
That's why I come here, one politics.
I just thank you though, to remove from the box. It's not like I wasn't up there.
Oh, really?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought.
Yeah, I've been here and done that too.
Different level.
Every time that we look at you, I'm like, oh, my God.
I know. Who was it?
Eddie was drinking.
No, really? What was his name?
Officially, this is.
Okay.
This guy.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Was an accident.
Hey, things have happened.
When it was a big.
Things like.
Yeah, but all the money in the trust box, so he earned twenty-one. He had lots of money.
Yeah.
And he bought his house and everything paid off, so he never worked a weekend. He just worked hard. And he had the role made. Twenty years old. He was married, he was married or?
I don't know. Well, they, that's kind of what they want to.
You know that?
I can see one or two.
When was that today?
I can see one or two.
But Ricky that lives on. Sullivan Street?
Who?
Ricky Popazon. I don't know his real name. But he lived in trailer, he writes about this somewhere. He has like chickens, like chickens and.
What?
Rabbits and.
Where?
On.
By, by Craig's Land.
Yeah, he was in that trailer.
He rents it off.
It's like a. But somehow I'm like distinctly related to his daughter and son, Michael and Brooke. Through my grandpa's side.
And he's got what?
He has chickens and he has rabbits and he has ducks.
Where's that at? Here in town?
On Sullivan.
Straight across that there field.
There you go.
Is that where you get your eggs?
For your clothes.
I don't know.
Rabbit, rabbit.
For your.
I'm missing. I don't know if he's still. I was in Facebook, he used to.
Okay, yeah, let's do it. Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, there's a little year for me to read over there. So I have no idea once you get on the other side.
Sorry, yeah, let me read.
Roca.
Scott?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Stan?
Yes, ma'am.
Steve?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yeah. Everybody had a chance to read the minutes? Got any discussion or we needed approval for those?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay, discussion and approval of the financial report?
Okay, um. Any questions for January? We spent forty-eight thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty cents for all the checks. And then the bank reconciliation, or reconciliation that we have is just from the end of December. One income, which we reconciled today for. So. At twelve forty-one, we had a roughly one million four hundred ninety thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars and six cents in the bank.
That would be in the two fourteen?
Uh, twelve. Would you mean the date, as I was asking?
Yeah, and you said the end of.
Yeah, yeah, twelve thirty-one, two thousand fourteen, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And also, on the incorporation status and stuff, it looks like everything's just getting started, so we're okay on it so far. We haven't really spent too much money in the first, first year or something. Probably gas for snowfall, right?
Not too bad.
I mean, this fall.
Yeah, at least it's now, and it's a lot better this year than it was last year, that's for sure.
Questions? You get it before it went up today?
I'm gonna do it after what?
Two thirty-three today.
Is that right, thirty-something?
Yeah. Okay, you need to sign this thing. I got that wrong.
Okay, for, anybody got any questions on that? No discussion? We need a motion to approve the financial report?
I'll make them up.
I'll second it.
Rob?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
This one's got to be signed too.
Okay, no special gifts, no public comment? Reports from committee, Scott, we just did here.
We just did it.
Yeah, so.
There's two.
Please, Brandon?
Um, there were ten verbal warnings, one citation regarding our suspension, and six adult complaints under that. The weather has been nothing. Nothing else important.
Is under the, the adult complaints, is that one a house that's broken into, or is that one a?
Yeah, that.
Okay.
They fall under that.
Did we have an issue with some of that, or you get a house broken or something?
Yeah. Or, not on stage, please. Or truce.
Officer, many of you.
Oh, okay, okay.
Any questions for Brandon? Not far, Steve?
Had nine calls for the month. The yearly total is nine calls. And there was a major issue with the station's heaters last week in January, which had a dangerous CO level in the station. Both heaters were shut off and contractor was called. As of right now, the south heater is dead and needs cleaned and the piping needs replaced. The north heater is running but needs cleaned as well, waiting for a call back to have it repaired. I imagine them are getting pretty old back there.
Yeah.
Whether we need heat, whether we're doing that, yeah, we need heat or whatever.
Corvettes.
Corvettes, yeah.
They're old, yeah.
And the Association Annual Reverse Raffle is March fourteenth at Old Zim's. Tickets are available by calling the station, four one nine nine eight six five one four one, or any Betsville FF. They mailed mine, so.
Yeah, I got mine. It's always a good time to come out and support them. Any questions for Steve? Very, Water Sewer Street, John. I skipped cleanup, sorry, Joyce.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It was nice to know.
It's all hidden underneath this snow nowhere.
Yeah.
Okay. Water Sewer Street, John?
Uh, Water Sewer up on the street, obviously we have part of this. We are having some issues with the dump truck. It likes to just shut off. We're trying to figure it out.
You, is it shut off since you fixed it, since you did that?
No. No, no.
Was it giving you cold or anything, or was it giving you any bulk? Nothing.
No.
Just turned off.
They were sort of like.
Turned it off.
No.
Sounds like it might have been like. So, we switch it.
Maybe it's one of them recalls.
But he did put a part on it.
Okay.
Hasn't had a problem since, but.
Okay.
Might be because it's too cold when.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay.
Yeah, it just shuts off and then it feels, gets tired, wants to take a break, I guess.
All right.
I tried to work it too hard.
Okay, any questions for John?
So, we haven't had any water line issues in it? It doesn't look like I've seen you, seen you out doing anything.
Andrew?
Okay.
Don't say that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Park, Brittany, did you want to read?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Like, just besides what we talked about, um, last month at a meeting and that's it.
I got a, I got a call from Merton Dish. He kind of did the Little League or whatever, so he's trying to figure out what the Little League's gonna do at the park. You know, I know we kind of talked about it, but I don't think, I don't know how that was financed before. Was, did we buy uniforms? How was that done? Who paid for the?
Well, the league didn't, usually don't, between the two of them, the sons and the American league, they gave a thousand dollars.
So I guess the question is, do you still want to try to do something with the Little League at the park?
Oh, Ford's having their own Little League.
Well, the reason, that's why I'm asking, because he, Merton called me that, that he had it before, so I'm just trying to figure out, who were the coaches out here in the past? I have no idea who did it.
No, Aaron Smith, but he said he didn't want to do it. He was one of them, but it was.
It was just parents of whoever.
Kind of what we could get.
So I guess, I mean, so apparently Merton has did this, I know he's did the Little League a lot of years, usually over regoons, so I didn't know if it was gonna be absorbed into regoon or.
People know what we did last year. I mean, her and Aaron Smith, both April conducted a lot of that.
Okay, so, I guess how you want to handle it then? Because he went, I told him I'd call two guys and say, what you want to do, and let him know, so. Do you want to try doing it?
It all, well, it all depends if he.
I think we have to look at the kids to see.
Because they're probably.
I don't know how many kids within Betsville, this village of Betsville are actually gonna do it, because all their friends are gonna be going to Fort Sunny Bay to play. And I'm not trying to turn our park away.
No, I understand, I understand.
I think what I'd like to do.
Well, it's kind of what they are doing, right? They're just dumping us all together. Yeah.
And no, I said no. What I would like to do is, if they want to deal with organizing everything, that'd be great. They're gonna need extra fields, because they have T, they have multiple T-ball teams, uh, they have the coach pitch, and they have, uh, I think it's C League. And they'll have probably six to maybe eight different teams that they'll have playing, so they're gonna need more fields, and I'd like to use our field. I mean, we'll still keep it and maintain it stuff throughout the summer.
So I guess that's the question, is, I mean, if we're willing to go out to the stone, and if you can organize it, then we got here all, does he kind of take allegiance, all that stuff, for uniforms and all that stuff? Is that how that was done in the past?
No, I usually go there and ask for the money, and then they donate it. I have every year so far.
So I guess, should I have him just contact you, and if he decides he wants to do it, and then you can kind of coordinate that with Legion? How do you want to do that?
Yeah, if, if there's.
That'd be the best way to do it.
If there's for it, with the, I think, didn't they already, did they already meet for Oh Four or not yet?
I don't remember what the date was. I know April posted on Facebook and had said stuff about like advertising that they were gonna have a meeting about to see who was interested in it, so that. Um, and what.
Being a head holder.
Well, I know there must be some meeting someplace, so I don't know, is that?
That may have been it. It was.
Yeah, I don't know how, how that works, so.
It was, I, I don't know. I was, I didn't go to it.
So I'll just say, maybe contact you, and you can look up the details, but if everybody's okay with, have to use the park as a.
Sure.
See what we can.
They got the kids.
Okay. I'll, I'll join that then.
But he would probably, he'd be responsible for it.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, maybe talk to you, and then you can explain what your concerns are, how we can handle it. I mean, like I said, if there's any kids, I don't, you know, although I don't, I don't know if this is active, it's used to be like, well, these kids, I think, plus kids involved in the Little League.
Oh, sure.
Those ones, those kids. Sure, it's different. Okay, I'll call him tonight then.
Uh, selling, Scott?
No, no new consignors or anything in town, so I'm a little bit.
Okay.
Anyway.
Still a little salty.
Oh, I'm filling that my guess right.
You started in April?
I haven't been built when I ran out of.
Did you get a permit?
No, I've gone out once.
Old business, uh, and, I don't think we talked about it a lot, but the snow removal, we need, if they, if, Bonnie, if you'd put that in a paper again, about the two inch bit with the snow downtown, cars must be removed up the street. Pretty mu, there's only usually two or three, but it's still, you need them out of the way to keep going. Otherwise, they'll be.
They're supposed to park and park and walk and do that.
You know, parking lot, I don't care where they park, as long as they're not parked there.
Okay, I guess the question is, um, if they don't, are we gonna do a fine to them, or how are we gonna, how are we gonna handle it?
Well, they, they are subject to fine.
So, they need to talk about that too.
But.
But repercussions if they are parked there.
Yeah.
Yeah, did you tell them at the owner's expense or anything?
Yeah.
They don't move?
I mean, do we have an ordinance for that?
Specifically?
Yeah.
Because I looked through all the ones that I have, and I didn't, I didn't see one.
I've never seen it.
I didn't know if we reference back to the basic code, which I didn't see anything in there either, or if we had our own that was, you know, passed before I was probably born.
You know, but, but before you all start to.
Right, that's.
There are specifics within the Ohio Revised Code and specific postings that have to be posted before you can possibly do that.
But we can't.
And, and we have, that's a strict letter to the law type of issue too.
All right, I, I like to be realistic. If it's that bad out, there's not gonna be a tow truck available to tow.
Right, right.
I just want them to be a little nervous about it, you know what I'm saying?
I don't like parking, we're just trying to fight behind it. And, and it, and it would come across, I don't want anybody thinking they can do it unless things are set up.
Brandon, we can, we can find them for parking them?
I didn't see anything specifically about snow streets or, you know, emergency streets specifically. Um, I mean, there's, I'll kind of catch all that says anywhere it's prohibited, um, but.
Well, doesn't there a sign up on the street say something, no parking?
It doesn't say the ordinance as far as I've seen it on it.
We don't, we don't have.
The bike tricks out there.
Yeah, we did, yeah. If, if snow is above two inches or something like that, you can park.
Yeah, oh, yeah. There's more. If you're two inches or more.
No, they have to be. There's also signs on every bowl uptown that says you can't park there for more than two hours.
Yeah.
But we never pass ordinance, saying what your repercussions will take. I mean, obviously, to John's point, you're not gonna tow it during the middle of the snowstorm. But that doesn't prohibit us from having an ordinance, and if they, they do it, get their license number and impose a fine, I mean, that's, 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 that's a way of, of deterrent, so they don't do it again. I mean, and it's in their best interest too, because you're trying to plow, you know all these cows are gonna get hit, these cars are gonna get hit sooner or later, and then they're gonna be coming back on us.
Well, they're gonna be mad because they're plowed in too.
You know, yeah. But what, what choice do you have?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, they're gonna be mad about that too.
I know, he's got a lot of.
Snowplow can do a lot of damage to a car. It's really hard.
Do you drive by and clear the snow?
Well, the, the challenge now is, you know, originally the downtown was a commercial zone basically, but then probably there is some commercial there that's brought down to now, so the majority would have to turn into apartments because of.
Hi, hi.
How do we, how do we find a balance, or because people, I mean, it's just like anybody else, that they pay money to live in that environment, and then, you know.
You'll find that in any, any downtown, any small town, is that right?
So I guess what we gotta do is maybe define where they park at, and make that approach of that way, so that that's always that problem. You can say, if it's a parking lot or whatever, or something, you know, I'm just saying.
I wouldn't have a problem if they, they pulled it over to the parking lot.
It's only fifty feet probably from the apartment.
They certainly walk there. After the streets in town are plowed, I put the box on the loading and clear the spots uptown and then do the parking lot.
Right, okay.
So there's always a place for them to move.
Their vehicles, right.
And everyone has been decent this year. Actually, this year has been the best year so far, except for like two. Well.
Well, I guess the issue comes down to if you just, if you kind of follow them, and they really don't move it, then that kind of gets more work on it, and maybe figure out, eventually maybe either.
Uh, maybe the snow boulder, the boulder, and they say, then if they're car, maybe we're gonna do much with it.
So if we get an ordinance made up then?
Stating what? I can do whatever that is.
Yes, it could be more specific than they had, so.
Oh, well, he needs to hear us talking.
Well, I guess.
Let me ask you this. Would it be better to have an ordinance that gives the right for a citation rather than having to tow it?
Yeah, if you, and if you make citation for an amount large enough, people will say it's worthwhile having the kid dig them out of there and move it. So five or ten bucks for a kid to dig you out versus, versus whatever the set fine is for parking.
I guarantee you, if I'm a tow truck, I'd tow them.
Yeah.
But we'd have to post that fine. Or no?
Yeah. Well, you have to have a posting as to, you know, whether it's no emergency over so many inches or something like that.
Those are already what we have.
We already have that, okay.
Just, just tell me what you want, mm?
Yeah, the sign says over two inches.
Over two.
I think more so our.
Two's not a whole lot, actually. Two's just a little bit.
Yeah, two's not very much.
I think more so our, our issue's gonna be the fine amount, because, uh, with Ohio Basic Code, you know, parking anywhere where signs for stopping is a minor misdemeanor.
But that's up to typically a hundred and fifty dollar fine.
Right, which was our schedule for that.
But we can, that can be anything from an unclassified misdemeanor to even minor misdemeanors, they have them for like, um, a loose dog, twenty-five to a hundred, so. A hundred and fifty is usually more than enough, but.
Unless we're gonna follow our regular, uh, class schedules.
Well, how do you guys handle Floss Florida? Like, if the downtown is with that?
Then the question is simply, were they parked there? Was it posted? Was it more than two inches? And for how long?
Right.
So, how long do you have for them to move? And? And the, um.
And who declares the snow emergency? Like, in Floss Florida, if there were, who will declare the?
The sheriff declares a snow emergency. So it's just who's, who, if it's over two inches, that's fine. If that's what the sign says, how long there?
Do we declare a own as a?
No.
Municipality now?
No.
Okay.
That's for the sheriff.
So how did all them towns do that in this past?
I don't know, in this county, it's the sheriff who declares it.
No, I'm just saying that I saw lists upon list of villages and towns that had declared snow emergency.
In Seneca?
Yes.
I mean, in Floss Florida, our safety service director declares it's snow emergency, we're gonna have four snow streets over two inches, and that, as far as.
Well, I, I would be in contact with the sheriff's office before you do that. Anybody says we're gonna do something different from what he's doing for the whole county?
Yeah, but what's his level, level one?
He's declaring level.
One, two, three.
Right, one, two, three, exactly.
The village can, most of the villages that was on there, they, they said it was a snow emergency. They were declaring snow emergency.
It's my understanding that they can, like, their own snow emergency just for inside. Incorporation.
Yeah, that's what we're talking.
And doesn't say, it doesn't, doesn't go based on the level, it goes based on our needs and what happens here, but I might be wrong, uh, but that's, the level's.
Whatever, whatever, whatever that means to them.
Right. So I mean.
The question is then how you communicate that? I mean, that's the other issue we're gonna have. If you're gonna declare a snow emergency, then you gotta have some way to communicate that to the residents.
Let's, I mean, basically, the signs that are posted right now say, no parking if snow over two inches, well, then that's how we keep the language. We don't have to figure out what a quote, "snow emergency" is.
Can we send maybe letters to the people that live uptown and say, hey?
They parked in front of the damn signs. Why do we have to waste postage on that? I'm just saying.
Well, I think, I think, I think that you do that because you give them the benefit of the doubt, say, maybe you didn't, maybe you can't read the sign or something, maybe they're gonna give you this letter, and maybe we're gonna give you that. But the issue comes down to.
Oh, why don't we send a letter to a guy?
An ordinance for parking on streets posted where it's prohibited, more than two inches, minor misdemeanor. Do you want, um.
We can.
Set a hundred and fifty dollar fine?
No, I think that's. Can't make it too low.
Just, just a minor misdemeanor, and then that's up to the judge.
Seventy-five, well, wheat in the middle.
Seventy-five?
Yeah.
Do I hear eighty? Eighty, 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 eighty. I hear eighty, eighty-five, eighty-five. Gone for eighty.
Okay.
Uh, three readings or emergency since it's snow season?
Well, I think, I, I, I think there's a change in, you know, how to, in three months, and just try to get it out there.
So this is for next year?
I, I think so.
I don't have that there's an emergency here. I mean, we've been doing this for how many years?
Right, yeah, I think we gotta be.
And even if we do, I mean, if, you talk about communication, well, our next communication would be that one of Brandon's, uh, direct reports says, okay, you're parked here, you're not supposed to be, here's a warning.
And that's what happened within this situation.
Yeah, there's a warning.
Guns aren't like a problem since.
You signed a little warning slip, the switch guy got off easy, no fine. Next time.
Yeah, that'd be good.
That's a better way to do it, I think.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I think it's better, you know, we could be, can't be too abrasive, you know, piss, don't piss everybody.
One piece of paper, we said, solved the problem.
Yeah, you push off one of the subordinates.
No, I don't know, I don't know.
You know, you did, yeah.
I'm all about that postage.
Yeah, that forty-nine cents.
Well, that's a lot, buddy.
Yeah. Any other discussion on snow removal?
Eighty dollars.
Thanks, Brandon.
Angela, you got the, the resolution twenty fourteen twenty credit card policy? Okay, this will be the third and final reading of the credit card policy. Twenty fourteen dash twenty. You know, purpose to establish, establish a convenient, effective, efficient and cost-effective method of purchasing goods and services when vendors will not accept purchase orders. Policy of the village of the toll ride credit card to the mayor and to all department heads to be used for purchases of goods and services when vendors will not accept purchase orders, or when attending contractors, workshops, or courses, purchase orders are not accepted. And then it gives the procedures every, the last first time, you know, so, uh, this will be the final reading of that. And that goes in, what, thirty days ago?
If, if it's passed.
Oh, okay. So, we need a motion to pass that resolution?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Bill? Steve?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay, next was personnel and procedures manual ordinance twenty fifteen dash one. We'll do that in three readings also. Ordinance exception rules of council of the village of Betsville, Ohio. Whereas the council of the village of Betsville is authorized by statute to set rules of council. Whereas the council is desirous of maintaining civility and fairness to the council of the village of Betsville, and therefore be adhering with the council of the village of Betsville, Seneca County, Ohio, as follows. And the rules are attached. Everybody got a copy of them? And all previous rules of council are superseded by attached rules. This will be the first reading.
That's the second reading.
Oh, second reading?
So this is twenty fifteen oh one, deciding right here?
Yeah, yeah. So that will be the second reading, sorry.
Is this a time to ask questions on any of those particular?
Or again, sure.
Okay, um, I would like some detailed clarification on items five and item nine. The other ones are fairly straightforward, but to me, maybe I'm just missing something, items five and item nine seem very vague.
It is alleged that an injury to or by a member of village government may have occurred, no member of the legislative story will in any way take it upon themselves to reform any investigation. Rather it shall be brought before council and the village administration at the regular meeting unless the mayor feels it is necessary cause special need. Any member may cite their concerns at that time, but it will be the administration duty of to delegate any investigation or inquiries using appropriate department head or village administration. What don't you understand about it?
Was there a particular incident that spawned this, alleged, if it is alleged that an injury to or by a member of village government may have occurred, has there been one that, that brought this to the attention of whoever wrote this up?
You've pulled this out of? I pulled this out of several, and I brought copies in here last year. These are, these are standard of rules that are in villages all across Ohio. Uh, and, and there's no alleging that anybody has violated this rule. It's to let you know that this isn't acceptable behavior by anybody. So, that's, we're, we're a legislative body, that's what we do.
Yeah, so you don't, I mean, like, police, your investigation body would be the police or administrator or whatever, if there's a thing what the, the cause is, and that's what, you know, we're supposed to be looking at the facts, and we're not, we're not, we don't.
Right, and it's a prison investigation, and they can present it to council and they may actually. What we're attempting to do is actually, uh, remind the council that our duties are legislative in nature, and that if there is something that any one of, anybody in this body finds that is inappropriate or needs investigation, rather than taking upon themselves to perform an investigation, bring it to the council and be delegated to that point, because we do have departments that take care of that. This is very open, I mean, this, this is a very open meeting, and it's the best place to air out those differences. Or the thought that there might be something inappropriate.
Right.
That's what that's about.
Okay, so there was no incident in the past?
No.
No, nope.
Nine, if no council member will be permitted to use or in any way present any document that may be construed as representing the village without the express permission of both the mayor and the council. Which means you can't say, well, I'm gonna do this, or. You just cannot, you can't say, well, I'm the council and I did it. Or, I mean, I'm talking for the council and. No, no, no single person represents the council.
So, the, the word document, what does that encompass, no council member will be permitted to use or in any way present any document, what, what does that encompass?
That you're making up something that.
I don't know. I guess I was hoping for some detail on the word document, what, what does it?
Well, document, actually, I mean, it could, it could be anything that rep, that is, using it, using as a tool for representation, representation of the council, without the council, you know, written permission to do so. So if somebody, you know, I, 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 we could take and type up something, say, this is what the council wants to do without having a council approval, and then, and without, that, that's what we're afraid of, we don't wanna have some kind of document or not, or saying that, you know, this, we agree or disagree with some event or something that's going on in the community without council approval. The council needs to be involved, and if we decide as, as a group that we're gonna, that's gonna be our position, and we can make a statement, statement that way.
Oh, yeah, can I use you, Steve?
Go ahead.
For example, let's say, uh, Steve wants to talk to someone, and he wants them to believe that this is the will of the council. So he makes up a paper on his own that's got what can be reasonably construed by the average citizen as a document with the village letterhead. And they pass that off as, as this, I, this document has authority. Well, he's not allowed to do that, he's not allowed to go off on his own. We, we as a legislative body are a body, not individuals going off on our own tangents and doing what we, that all happens right here. If you have a question, we got a lot of people ask. That's what I meant by that, and that is those three, uh, village, uh, not drawing from your last document, but they have roughly the same thing, and it's in the ORC.
A lot of what we discuss here and is available here is public knowledge, like, somebody can see, well, what were the minutes from the last meeting, or what are the financials for the village? As far as I know, that's all public information, but I could hand the minutes to someone and say, well, here's the minutes, you asked what the minutes were from the meeting, here they are.
Yeah, and that's, and that's pretty much after a fact, what you've already done. Because the minutes are approved, you have to wait till they're approved from. Yeah, they're approved. I mean, you can't, you cannot, like, you're always in more behind a few minutes. So like, you just approved, uh.
That way you can catch the stake or something?
Yeah, you can catch the way, the mistake before something's out.
Out in public, you know, so, so once we, once we all agree, we, we approve it, then it's, then it's public knowledge and blah, anybody can re, reference that document and say, you know, you guys said this in the state or whatever, you know, and then we can reference that and discuss what we have to, whatever.
Okay, I guess the only last thing I have on this is, as it says here, council rules slash bylaws, rough draft suggestions. I might be wrong, but the previous information that you brought, like in October, and some other documents, might not be quite the same as a.
Exactly.
They're exactly the same?
Exactly the same, I printed it, it's on ten twenty-eight fourteen.
Okay.
And that's when I brought it, and it's still.
So there've been no changes?
And I, and I can email it, no, there has absolutely not.
And that's why.
So this isn't a rough draft, this is the final version?
This is the rough draft I wrote, when it gets incorporated into the rules. When, when we, when we do this, well, then it will, that'll be all gone. This is not gonna be physically attached, this is gonna be rewritten, uh, without this and put into our rulebook.
But wouldn't it have to be a final draft that's read three times, you can't read three different versions and prove it and say, well, version one was slightly different, it was a rough draft?
Never changing, I'm not changing anything, I, I mean, that's, you can consider it a rough draft, I was asked to print this the way I wrote, and that's what I did.
So you don't anticipate any changes or additions or?
It'll be, it is my understanding that this will be a living document, it will not be changed unless council.
Right, I mean, that's what, that's what we're having the three readings, I mean, that's what we're discussing this. That's, I mean, that's, that's what we're, that's what we're publicly rating this right now, because he concerns with resolve issues.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's why we're here. And, and they, and like, if you notice right at the end, it says fourteen, and there's nothing there. Well, fourteen is whatever council, if they decide. We can amend it at a later date, but. Hey, we got a problem here, we need to add this to it. You're, you're approving what we got here, as a way.
Could there be an item fourteen added before the third reading?
Okay, not touching it, that's the reason why I brought these tonight. Anything else with the amendment, Phil? I'm not, no, absolutely not. Hang on, I mean, if, if you, if you think there's even a possibility, hang on to your copy, we all are, and, and if something, I mean, you think something happened, compare it side by side. I'm not gonna change it, I will be emailing that to, to the village.
Direct report.
Okay.
One, just one last question, back on item nine, who would it be that decides what a document could be, council as a whole? So if this gets passed and then down the road someone says, well, what I see here or here, or what Poe did, or what Scott Harrison handed out, qualified as a document, we vote on it as a whole?
All right, great, all right.
And I guess, what, what prompted this entire thing, I mean, what do we, what do we, why do we feel?
I noticed that last year we had a lot of bumps, shall we say, in deciding what, what our roles are, I know I, I've asked that question of Gary and Scott many times, of what is the role of council? And I was encouraged to dig into it and go through it, so I spent a lot of hours on the internet going through the ORC and going through the, uh, as a matter of fact, you suggested I go through the ORC a little bit. And, uh, this is what we drew up, and we thought, you know, and we talked about council several times. We don't have any rules for us to follow, what are, what is our responsibility? Well, so we decided, let's bring this up, we brought Rick in, we talked to Rick at the council meeting, and this is what was suggested.
So are you thinking that these aren't contained in the village officer's handbook, or enough information is?
No, I know, I know they're not, I know they're not.
I think what helps her is, it gives us a standard to kind of figure out how, how to, uh, control the council as, as a meeting as a whole, and also to give us a, some adjustment for conflict resolution, we're trying to figure out if this reaches where we feel the council's responsibility, so we have some way to reconcile that in a fair way, so it's, it's more black and white, it's more, more structured, that's all we're trying to do. I think that's, that's all, this whole thing is a big problem.
Rob, maybe in your own notes at home, if, if you have any ORC things that you base number nine and number five on, I'd be interested in, if maybe you, you know, wrote down the ORC, I can look for it myself, but if you have any notes, I'd love to see them.
I would suggest you report yourself because, you know, I, I put a lot of time in this already, and not that I'm unwilling to do it, but.
Well, I just said, I was thinking if you already had notes to yourself.
This, this is what I saved, and I don't have the rest of it saved on my hard drive anymore, I, I saved this, because I didn't even know if it's gonna fly, but if you wanna get in the ORC or link it, but I'll, I'll tell you this, you won't Google very far on village rules and bylaws and not find everything that's in this. There was, there was, see, and there must have been sixty, seventy things that were included in this, and we decided at the meeting in October, let's keep it simple, let's do the bedrock facing and build on it from here. And that's what we did.
Okay, well, I just would like to go on record as being concerned with item five and item nine. And especially item nine, it seems to me, and maybe it's just my personal perception, but it seems like item nine could be construed in the future to say, hey, uh, that Facebook fan page or that website I created or someone created, we're gonna consider that a document, we don't want you posting things on, we don't want you putting recordings of the meetings on Facebook or whatever, and that's gonna fly against a couple of things, free speech and also the Ohio sunshine laws, so I, I don't wanna see us get in trouble. And again, item nine concerns me a lot.
And that's absolutely the reason why, well, we gave it in October, November first. We told everybody to look over it and pay. Everybody, and I made definitely sure that Rick, our listener, had copied this, the review of it before we even thought about going forward. Didn't tell everybody if they had any change before any thing to bring it up before we do this, so, well, you did.
Rick, do you have any concerns or thoughts on item nine, offhand? How that could be construed?
No council member will be permitted to use in any way present any document that may be construed as representing the village without the express permission of both the mayor and the council. And the way I read this, it means it's that the council, uh, and the village government speaks for it, not individual members of the council. So that, uh, if there's going to be some sort of document being presented to the public as representing the thoughts of the council and the mayor, the government, it has to come from the council, the mayor, and the government, and not from individual, uh, individuals, uh, on council, because it starts no council member. So, if Joyce decides on Betsville letterhead to say everybody's house needs to be painted pink, I think that, and council didn't vote on the law for that, that's actually not kosher, she can't do that, that's not what the council voted on. And the way you know whether or not it's represented from the council is it'll be in the minutes. It has nothing to do, uh, you mentioned public records, but public records is basically what we've done already, so that's out there, that's always permissible, but if there's a, some sort of order for pink houses being issued without some sort of ordinance requiring that by a singular councilwoman, I'm picking on you, Joyce, do you like pink?
That's okay, that's okay. What I'm thinking is, okay.
I mean, that seems ludicrous, but I, I think that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for a more realistic example, that's way out there.
Well, no, I mean, but you can go from way out there to say, yeah, that's obvious, so there's point of agreement there, to, I mean, you know, if, if somebody's saying, uh, maybe not so ridiculous, but a little more disconcerting, somebody in their, uh, village of Betsville were collecting, uh, money for such and such a charity, some council member does, please put the money in a, in the bottle by the front door, uh, and council didn't approve that, that's a concern, and that has happened, not here, but that has happened. So, I, so, not here in Betsville, but people have scams and things like that, I see, I think that's ridiculous also, and people would know better. To me, it, it seems like common sense, council speaks for council, uh, you know, there's a saying with the judges, they speak through their entries, council speaks through its ordinances, its resolutions, its minutes, and if there's anything else issuing forth, you know, it, it's by approval of the government itself, not by an individual member, does that make sense?
I, the thing I'm, okay, it's like we're, we're at a meeting here, right, maybe there's something I didn't agree with, okay, or whatever, and I'm all picked off, so when I leave this meeting, I'm gonna go home and bitch and moan and tell about ten people, you know?
That's your right too.
Yeah.
Just so long as it wasn't an executive session.
But, but everybody else agreed, you know, what I'm saying.
It doesn't mean you have to agree with everybody, you can't bitch and moan.
Right, right.
It's just that don't bitch and moan on something that looks like official council letterhead.
Yeah, okay.
And, and speaking from the government itself, it, it's your own private bitching.
Or even, or even say that you're talking for the council.
Yeah, I mean, when you speak for yourself, you speak for yourself, when you speak for.
Or as a safeguard, if, if you poster, write, or verbally say, I don't speak for council, I don't speak for the village, this is my personal opinion, that would be a good safeguard.
I've done that with my current job, when, uh, my full-time job, and I thought I wanted to go to a board of education meeting where I was objecting to them putting a drug rehab house in the neighborhood. And, uh, so I said, I'm speaking for myself, but, these are the constantly, I'm not speaking my position of my full-time employment, but these are the problems, and these, these are the consequences of what happened in Akron, with sex offenders getting out there, directly contrary, and this is what it's gonna do to the neighborhood. So, I made it clear, I spoke in public forum, and I, I.
That, now that makes sense, because had you not said that, people would say, well, he's speaking for the city.
Exactly, that's why I just prefaced everything I said with that.
Okay, and that's, that's the context, I mean, you're getting the context of what we're talking about here, that's, that's what you just said right there, so, that's what the context of what that, that statement is, so.
And even if, even if down the road, some of these complaints under rule number nine, it's still gotta be talked about on council, it's not a given that they did.
Right.
Okay, I mean, we're gonna talk through it.
Okay, thanks. So this is the second reading of this?
Yes. Everybody got anything else to bring up under all business? New business, there's no magistrate for it, for, so, nothing to prove there.
Okay, Gary, I, I would like to go into the second session and discuss some personnel issues.
Okay.
Can we do that for a few minutes, and then?
We'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion. On the second session.
And it's for personnel?
Personnel.
Or who'd it be present? Let me shut off that recorder then.
I guess we have to.
No, somebody's.
And, and for.
She got to go sit in an unheated garage.
Oh.
You know what, I'm gonna tell you something.
That heater's never been shut.
It's on right now. See?
Thanks.
Tony, we have what's, uh.
Does he got one? I'm wondering.
I ain't put it on there. And I know it works, 'cause I just used it on a call the other day. You knew that one, too? I couldn't have done that, Gary.
Did he say how many?
I don't know how you use it, I think. Me either.
Huh?
Okay, who's got a calculator?
Oh, John.
Everybody's got one.
I don't have one, and he's got one, he doesn't, I use it.
Marrow, Sessner. John? Do you, do you have a?
Do you, do you have a, a list of, of people in town or whatever that shovels snow with a truck or a tractor or anything?
You get it?
I had a couple of calls Sunday, you know, and Tom Kips, I know, he was buzzing around for a while. But, uh, I, I didn't know.
Figure out how much of a, what percentage it is.
The problem is you're not going to get anybody that has the equipment.
I figured, I thought you were clear about that.
Yeah. I mean, it's just like for sidewalks and driveways, you know?
They take kids.
Kids. Get about the house and play games.
I agree. Okay, we are now out of executive session.
Well, while we're sitting here, Scott's figuring out what kind of percentage that raise is.
About seven, seven and a half percent.
All right, divide that by one point five. About four.
No?
Six two, one eight, one sixty. Where's the one point five? Where, where do you know where the one point five is?
She, it's eighteen months. She's been on there eighteen months. So I'm trying to figure out what it is for an annual, for an annual raise. That's what I'm trying to figure out. So, you just.
Okay, we came out of executive session. And, uh, we have a letter from Angela here. Says, dear village council, according to village handbook, having to be evaluated by council. Therefore, I am asking for the council for an evaluation of my work for the last past eighteen months as a fiscal officer. I feel my salary for twenty fifteen should be seventeen thousand dollars. Thank you.
What was your fifteen, what?
Eight nine, nine ninety-six or something like that.
Sixty-five.
It's a thousand forty-five bucks. That's why I thought that six was high.
Yeah. You say it came up to what, fifty cents an hour or something like that?
That's at a two thousand eighty hour, but it's still a salary.
And, and we haven't done it for eighteen months. So I, I don't have an issue with it myself personally.
So should I make a motion to do?
Yeah.
Make motions and, yes.
Question. All right, if not, well, go ahead and make the motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, adjust your wages to the seventeen thousand.
I'll second it.
Starting when?
Starting.
January one, right?
Yeah, I think it should.
Make it regular, I give.
I think everybody's ready to act it back to January first. Uh, as far as evaluating, we'll talk about that after we've got through the roll call.
Who's second?
Rob.
I did.
Scott.
Yes?
Rob.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Stan?
No.
Steve?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, as far as evaluation, I mean, uh, uh, I guess I'm guilty as everybody else sitting here. Uh, as far as not doing as good of a job evaluating, uh, as we probably should have. But based on the fact of all the problems we've had for years and the fact that I think Angela has done, from my knowledge, a, a very good job. I, I would say that based on what we just did, we gave her a favorable evaluation. Uh, to evaluate her further, like you say, we kind of, this is what her job duties are. She either does them or doesn't.
Right.
So we just need a list of her job duties. Then we evaluate if she's successful on a yearly basis as well.
Is that something you could do Angela and maybe put a task list together, what you're responsible for? Maybe that way we just, we can, we can, as we move forward, we can make sure we keep track of all that stuff, make sure, you know, that we.
Well, I'm, I'm sure Larry.
Yeah.
Had a list of these are the things you had to do.
Right, yeah. So we just make sure.
So, you know, it's not really coming from her. It's coming from Larry.
Yeah. Probably we can compare them, compare them.
Sure.
That's your to do?
Yeah.
The whole book.
Well, I guess, I guess what we should do is we ought to, as we move forward, we ought to formalize this more so it's easy for everybody.
Right.
I'm just saying, we put that, we put that into what the procedure is and this is what we evaluate her on. This is what her responsibilities are. So it is more black and white than it's public records saying, okay, this is what Angela is supposed to be doing, you know, for her, her job.
That's what I was.
Yeah, so.
So we're talking about real dollars and real cents and we have responsibility to, to, to the citizens of this town. They say that she met our expectations and this is why.
So if we attach them to do their procedure, policy, procedure manuals, so that way it's in there. So we just say fiscal officers are responsible for these key items and then, you know, then, then we, we do a yearly evaluation or something like that. And we probably, we probably should do, we should, probably should do the, we ought to do the evaluations in, in, say, December. So.
No, no later than we, well, no later than the November meeting, which we should be discussing this. Because this should be all put to bed.
Before the.
Before the turn of the calendar.
So we maybe we'll put that by November, we just start with the evaluation and so we can have it all, you know, agree, agreed through the council by the December meeting or whatever.
Yeah, in a, in a more formal, uh, setting, you always have a beginning, a mid-year and then, and a year. And the end of year is always a month or so away from the end of the year. And then we highlight exactly what you did that was great. And we also, this is what we'd like to see you do to improve.
Right.
If that should happen.
Right.
That should come out.
Right, so it's a fair evaluation.
Yeah, so it's a fair evaluation. You can just.
Oh, yippee.
The list of duties is most generally going to be a job description for that particular job.
No more now.
So really you guys should approve them before we attach it to.
Well, I agree. That's why I'm saying, well, we need to, we need to.
Yes, well, we have to, we have to do that going forward in two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, we, we need, we need to formalize all, even like position, all that stuff, make sure that there, you know, that if there's any issues, we can address those issues in a, in a formal fashion, I guess. We, as we get smarter, as we move forward. And I'm, I'm sure that's with, you know, with everybody else in the council as far as the fighter chief and all that stuff, we've got to have, you know, you know, our, is he meeting our, our needs and, or whatever? We just have to be honest about that stuff, move forward with those things. So it's not just, and just for you, everybody's in the organization, police department, whatever. Because I think that's where you get in trouble in the past, where nobody was really watching and, and questioning things or making sure that there wasn't, wasn't issues going on before the, the question got too far. So we.
Well, yeah, there's always going to be somebody comes along and rightfully so, this is how do you know?
Yeah, right.
And we don't.
And you're in the documentation, prove one way or another.
We think, we don't know.
You know what? At least if we have a document, document saying, okay, we did evaluation, these were some of the issues that we, we had concerns with and this is, you know, how things, you know, the possible things or whatever. At least you got the paper trail. So that way if you end up farther down the road, if you get, you know, you, you're protected. So I think that's, you know, that's how we do it in our organization, you know, so.
Sounds good to me.
Kick to the rabbits.
Okay.
What's this about rabbits?
What about rabbits? You got, you got an email, right?
Uh, Mike Twig wants to raise rabbits for me, I guess. I told him I would bring it up to council. I don't know how many rabbits.
Well, that would be the thing, how many?
Well, if he's raising them for me, it's going to be more than two.
Well, it depends on which two.
You can't have two males and two females.
Yeah, not in this state.
Yeah.
Uh, I, 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 I hesitated that because we just told a gentleman last summer he couldn't beef farm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is considered an agriculture thing. And I don't think that's a whole lot different than breeding rabbits. I mean, it's not quote a domesticated, what we consider a domesticated animal like a cat or a dog or.
We were not supposed to farm animals.
Yeah.
Well, we can't find, Brandon and I was looking, we can't find any rabbits for that. I don't know if something's covered in basic code about that. Or if you guys are going to ask for it.
Exactly. I don't have anything. Yes, I, I don't know the gentleman. I don't have a problem with the concept, but I do have a problem with ramifications. And I'd say, well, what about mine?
Well, we're.
Somebody wants a collar to have milk.
Oh, yeah.
Right, where you stop.
Like John, they was going to put a horse down there, you know, so, you know.
But then I also heard before the meeting, somebody over here has got a bunch of stuff, so, all right.
Well, I guess the thing is, you know, how does it, how do we rate the ordinance for bees? Was that specifically just for bees when it?
Yeah, it was. It was. It was just.
And I agree with you saying, we, we got to be consistent and fair. It's just like everything else. So we got to figure out all week.
You know, there's an old adage.
Yeah.
Well.
You can get away with doing something, but when you go to ask, you better be careful.
I mean, if it'd be different if it was a four each project or something.
And for a four each, you're only going to have one or two.
Yeah, right.
And just like we told them, you know, if you're going to beef farm, you do that on a farm, not inside. Because we have, I, I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with that. I'm just saying that.
We've got people who are.
We have to deal with this afterwards if we make a decision too hastily.
One cent starts, the ball's rolling.
Yeah.
We're seeing that with the sewer taps.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, well, we, we understand that.
Distinction is, is between the commercial, uh, raising animals versus pets. And also then we already do have on, on, in the Ohio basic code, how the wind says regarding smell and things like that. So if somebody wants a pet chicken, I've done that. I've had one pet rooster and two pet chickens, but I didn't eat them. Uh, you're allowed to have pets. Uh, that's where the ordinances usually have a dividing line.
Right.
And, and this area I have found in some other villages, the issue of, uh, raising something for, uh, county fair. If you have the land for it. Is different also.
So if you're allowed to have pets, you can have a horse.
Huh?
So if you're allowed to have pets, you can have a horse.
If you have enough acreage, because there's, there are other rules regarding how many acres you can have for a horse.
And how big, yeah.
Last time I looked, I thought it was ten acres.
What is it for rabbits?
A cage, about a year.
So I think we need to investigate it and be careful what we do before we do anything, right? I think we need to think about it and not make a knee jerk reaction type.
Slow down.
Because we had so many complaints about all those dogs that guys recently.
He's still, he's still, I haven't heard, they still, they still got a bunch of them.
They're there, they're there.
I might have to call her again.
Must be on the house right now. Imagine that, you know?
Oh, no. He's been in the house.
No, no, I couldn't imagine that.
Yeah, I can't imagine the inside of that.
But anyhow, so we're going to table it and.
I think we table and think about it because I don't think we don't, I don't think we want to make a knee jerk reaction right yet tonight when we get figured out.
Can come up with a game plan.
Yeah. Because, I mean, I mean, taken, like you said, a lot of different ways, we gotta be careful. I mean, that's, that's, that's the bad part of a lot of these ordinances, you know, but you try to do one thing and sometimes the side effects are.
You know what you meant.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and this, here I had Rob bring up these streets because we said he was going to do some paving this year.
Yeah.
Uh, you got copies of, you and who else went up and did this?
Bill.
Bill, you and Bill. Okay, uh, and they come out with recommendations. There's, uh.
Notice these are our copies. Anybody's willing, uh, welcome to look at them. I did.
Is each one a different street?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, each, each staple copy is the same?
How much do you think we want to, we want to spend on?
There's not one for each. There's each one, there's, I brought one set. It's too expensive for me to print all that out. But I did email these all to the village email tonight. So Angela has this. And, uh, this is something that Bill and I were asked to do last summer.
Mm-hmm. So do you, do you have a priority where you think we ought to, where do you think we ought to do it?
Uh, we have what our thoughts. Yeah, yeah. I mean, it was up to council and it, you know. At that time, we were looking for grants for Worshington Street. They were going to do that and, uh, but it's all in here. And like I say, if they want to put them off, there's fine. Seneca Street, uh, there's several pictures of Seneca Street. And that's bad shape. Uh, Union Street from State Sullivan, uh, especially around the gas station, as you can see, I mean. You can see how, how bad the roads are. I mean, we all know, but there's pictures of you want to go back to Worshington Street, uh, the damage that's done to that and.
How much money are we going to have, like for one or two?
Well, that's what we got to figure out how much. Check in white though.
King Street.
I know.
Yeah.
King Street I put down as my pick for the worst as far as condition wise. Because it, it's, it's not much more of a path at this point.
Which is a, that one's hard to blow.
It's, it's, it's a bad street.
King.
Uh, Sullivan Street, not so bad, uh, getting down towards your neck of the woods. But up there along where it meets Union, uh, we've had, I think you cold patched that since then. And, uh, it's pretty rough.
It's rough.
And you get.
Fair going up towards twelve.
While, while we have, uh, John, excuse me, can you get some numbers? So we can make a decision of where we want to put money at as far as.
Those are yours.
I'm trying to think. We did a good job.
I saved all that.
Good thing you did whatever and just say, okay, what's the cost of this or whatever and get some numbers and so that we can decide how we want to spend our, spend our money.
Yeah, we're all just, this is the way the people, the people get to see that we're spending money.
Right, I agree.
On them, you know? We're doing it for the benefit of the town. But Seneca's true.
Yeah, Seneca is a quality.
We patched, we patched.
And the Seneca too, I mean, we had to see if we can get something to deal with those trees too, because some of those trees are all over.
I don't worry about Joyce. She's going to take care of that cleanup. You said you knew who owned that.
But, oh, the woods. Oh, yeah, okay. I got his number.
Who is that?
That's what you said last time.
I know it.
You still got his number?
Yeah, I still got his number.
But I think we.
He's from Barry's birth.
Oh, really?
I watched and she'll have your number too.
She does.
Well, the, uh, France Stone Company subsidiary.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I didn't expect that to change by now.
No, I probably couldn't give it to nobody.
So we have any other business there?
Well, I was going to ask, anybody got anything, new business to bring up?
Well, thank John. He's, I think he's doing a good job. Snowfall.
Public records training.
Huh? Oh, yes, I will.
Want to recognize him. There he is.
On, uh, four twenty-four of fifteen is a public records training in Tiffin. At the, what, what was that? The old Kroger store in Tiffin. Do you know where that was?
North Sun Ohio Educational Service.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the old mall.
Oh, is that where that's at?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What are they, they just moved down the road there.
And what they're recommending, we send one person.
One council member and they come back. I'm not sure if they said the mayor too. And they come back and tell the other council members.
So it isn't a day thing? Day thing?
Seven o'clock at, or seven o'clock at night, or no?
He didn't tell me the time. I think it's usually.
No, it ain't seven o'clock at night. I think it is during the day.
Nine or ten, isn't it?
My buddy's not by that time.
It's hard to believe they're starting seven in the morning though.
Yeah, no, it ain't that.
Oh, he can say ten AM, ten AM.
I have, I have another meeting. So I have ten AM. Okay. We've got some time. Did you say who wants to go or what?
When is it?
April twenty-fourth.
It feels so fast though. Yeah, it feels so fast.
Oh, yeah, you, yeah, we do. For John to vote for us, you know who's coming. That's on, what day is it on?
Friday.
Friday.
Kind of records. Old Elvis records or?
Oh, yeah, Elvis records, yeah. Public records training. Did you go to that stand?
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. It was very interesting. I found it really interesting.
Okay, too.
Anything else?
No, I have nothing else, but we're going to have to.
One's, one's, one's let out. I'm trying to decide.
Oh, when it lets out? I don't know how.
It goes about four hours.
Two or something. Yeah, it's, it's, uh.
It's like four hours.
Part of the day, yeah.
I turned sixty-two this year.
Ooh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, social security, baby. Not yet, not yet. I got three more, three or four more. Put me down. It's okay with the. Put me down. It's okay with the.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
Probably.
Go or he disagreed to go?
It'd be good for the minutes to indicate at least who's going to the council's judicial or in compliance.
I'll make a motion, we send Rob to the.
And it could be more than one.
Lions.
We can, we can.
As many as you want can get in.
You're going, Gary?
Yeah.
I don't think there's a cost to it.
No.
So I'm just hoping Joyce may.
There will be my dog, Gary.
The thing is.
Wait a second.
There's a little cost to it, is there?
Scott, second. So you're gonna go too, Gary?
Yes.
Okay.
Last year they gave a Subway sandwich lunch bucket or a little lunch basket.